These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, November 3rd, 2014. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes of regular session, October 20th, 2014. Any changes or issues? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting you're allowed to address council. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our reference.
I'm Linda Woodrow. I live at 630 Federal Bay Avenue in the township. And I'm here to represent our family's business. We have rental apartments in Alpena. On Grant and right off of Grant Street. They are right close together, but you can understand my surprise when they get almost a $600 water in Sewerville. It went from 308 to 59562. And after looking at, comparing it to, this is a one-bedroom apartment with one person per unit. And we have a one-two-bedroom apartment at that location. And versus a two-bedroom apartment right around the corner. And that one came out to be $380, which I would expect to be reasonable with the new rate increases. But we did a little checking to find out what the problem is. And it is that we have a larger size meter that must have been put into the property when they originally built the apartment complex. And when you look at the debt and infrastructure, each one of those bills average out to about $10 increase per unit of debt or infrastructure, if you balance them all out. But the real big change is in the ready-to-serv. The ready-to-serv charge is $105 versus a one-inch meter that has a $15 ready-to-serv charge. And then you take that water and sewer and you double it because it's for each one. So on this typical bill that I got, I figured that it was about $217 difference, not in water usage, but more based on the fact that it is a little larger meter. And we did check, we can bring that meter size down to a one-inch. But I've been told unless they find something wrong with the meter, not only will we be paying the charge to have that meter reduced, but then we also will be charged for a meter. And to me, I think that's wrong. If we had a meter that the whole city decided that it needed, we changed out and everybody with a one-inch meter got a new one, they come along and I may have to purchase a new meter. And that meter would be $300. So not only is it a burden and unfair, but these are basically on the lower end not of quality, but they're a small unit, one bedroom. And they serve people that are on social security or a one-person income. I can't go to my renters and ask them to pay more money because my water bill doubled from 308 to 596. And it's a burden. I can't continue to carry that burden. It's unfair to me. You have to be able to be a little profitable and you can't be in business. And I'm sure these people will be very upset if they saw a great big increase, which they can't burden that either. So I just want the council to be made aware of it. And I'm comparing two apartments almost side by side. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Linda. As a note, I've discussed this with Greg. Staff's gonna prepare a response or an explanation, if you will, to council. Rather than discussing it and having an issue this evening, give us a little bit more time to understand where the staff would be coming from with those bills, so they'll present it to us at a different time and we'll just understand that as well.
Hello, my name is Mason Mummerich of 317 South Second Avenue.
Blaze Nugent, 1210 South Main Hill Road.
Swastika Shree, 514 South First Avenue.
Shelby Sexton, 844 South First Avenue.
And we are here on behalf of the AHS first robotics program. We are a program from the local high school here that is used to really benefit engineering as a whole in future endeavors and to promote STEM programs in our youth. What this program does is we create robots which we take to a sporting competition. And last year, it was our first year in the program, and we went to Traverse City and Eskenaba for their programs. And our robot was about five foot tall and it had a very large pneumatic claw on the back of it which was used to throw an exercise ball seven feet up into the air. All of this is wirelessly controlled through computer programming. And we're looking to help promote the program through the community's involvement, also to gain possible funding. Because last year, we were running completely off of grants and this year, we no longer have that grant money. What our, the program is a nationwide and international program, which is the pinnacle of engineering programs for high school students. And we believe that this definitely needs to be something that is continued in our schools.
So that's our high school program. And also, we are working on building feeder programs in the elementary and junior high levels. We have helpers there that, that way, like, the kids can get used to robotics and building things. And then when they get into high school, it can be very interesting. And this helps foster the math and science of a young age. Also, at our competitions last year, we, there's usually about 40 teams at competitions and we placed 11th and 14th. And then at the state rookie competition, we were given the Rookie All-Star Award, Rookie Inspiration Award, which is the second best rookie team in the state.
So like Mason said, last year, we were running off of grant money and this year, we not have it. So we're looking for help from the community members and leaders. We would appreciate any supplies, volunteers, or monetary donations you'd like to give to us. So all donations have a certain level of tier. And with any donation, you would receive your business name on our website, Facebook page, Twitter account. And with donation of $50 or greater, you would have your team name or your name on a banner that we hang over like the bits at competitions. With $100 or more, you could have your name on t-shirts and those t-shirts are worn by the whole team at all the competitions, so less people see that. With $250 or more, you could have like a larger name still on the banner and you could have a logo on the banner. And the top three donations, all over $1,000, would have your name stamped on the robot itself in the competitions. So if you would like to donate to that, make checks payable to AHS Robotics. And another way we're planning to raise money is with our upcoming fundraiser dinner. Taste of India.
So like Shelby said, we're having a fundraiser dinner. It's called a Tasty Vinaigrette, where we can serve authentic Indian food and that includes butter chicken masala, pilaf which is rice, tender chicken, naan, and lentils for vegetarians. There's tickets being sold at Niemann's and Purchase all throughout this week. They are $12 for adults, $6 for children 10 and under. It will take place at the AHS cafeteria, November 8th. This is at Saturday, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Just call or go to Niemann's or Purchase. Or you can call Melissa Dillback at 989-844-3899 for more info. And that will be our Taste of India dinner.
And we would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you much. Thanks. Okay, on the consent agenda this evening, bills to be allowed in the amount of $352,303.21. B is three mayoral reappointments to the planning commission for a three-year term expiring November 1st, 2017. Wayne Lewis, Patrick Harty, and Clay Van Wagoner. C are two council reappointments to the recreation advisory board for a three-year term expiring November 1st, 2017. Tammy Romell and Phil Heath. D are two council reappointments to the wildlife sanctuary board for a three-year term expiring December 1st, 2017. Roger Witherby and Alice Holcomb.
I move we approve that consent agenda.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, no announcements, no proclamations. Report of officers, treasurer's financial report of July 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2014.
We should be at 25% of our budget. We're one quarter through the fiscal year. Our revenues are at 44.82%, mainly because of our property taxes that have come in. Our expenses are at 19.98, so they're nicely under our prorated budget of 25%. And it's pretty obvious, everything that's obvious, everything that's going on around town right now, the parking lots are getting done. Steve's working on the phone system with the county. Don Gilmett, he just put in the Marina sensors that we had to have. DEQ required those. We got those done. Our old DPW building, we found out it was on a land contract, that's gonna be paid off. So that money will go into our city hall building fund, so we can get some new windows and HVAC and all the necessary things we need for this building. It's so old, but it's not efficient, energy efficient at all.
Actually, that was closed on Friday and we received a check on Friday, I was told Friday afternoon. So I don't know if they deposited yet or not, but we do have that, so that worked out well.
And so things are moving along through town and the projects are getting done. We're staying under budget, it's very good. We did have a three-year health study, post-retirement health study that I gave everybody. It's a little difficult to understand, but it's just, it's a study that shows how we're funding the retirement's healthcare. And we need, as with retirement, we try to get that pre-funded, but we have never been able to do that. It's just been pay-as-you-go. Well, we've got about $650,000, $700,000 in there right now. We need about 4.5 million more. Yeah, we're a little bit underfunded. However, yeah, it will be baby steps. We did put a little bit more in this fiscal year, so if we can get healthy again, we can at least slowly put a little bit more in there. And a lot of communities pay as you go. I mean, you just can't fund both your retirement and your healthcare, especially with the costs. But, you know, we've had a lot of, we've tried real hard to keep our costs down. We've had some good news that our rates may not go up quite as much as we had thought next year, so we keep working at that.
And actually, the last couple of years, we have been able to put, we know roughly what it costs us each year to pay towards premiums for the retiree's healthcare. But we've been able to put in excess of that. Roughly anywhere from 40% or so more than what those costs are. So that does add to that balance. And that's what we're trying to do, is at least always keep ahead of what would be pay as you go. And that's, so that if there are things that happen where later on, where we're not able to put as much in, at least we have some cushion there. So I think we're definitely going in the right direction on that. I don't know that we're ever gonna take care of the four and a half million dollars, but the way we're doing it, we are making sure we cover costs plus some.
It's about $10,000 a month for medical costs right now, so we keep working on it. Are there any questions on any of them?
Just real quick, you mentioned that our expenses were 19%. Is there traditionally a quarter where our expenses are higher, or are they usually pretty even throughout the year?
Well, some departments are higher. Cemetery was 34% because all the work and the lawn mowing and the kids working and helping us is in the summer. So that one runs high in the summer. So you'll start seeing in the winter, probably cemetery will go down in expenses. So yes, there's definitely seasonals with the different departments in the general fund.
There's that one season that hits us a lot harder than the other three?
Probably the summer.
Summer?
Yeah, that's where all the, the majority of the work is. Now, winter for DPW with the snowfall, so, you know, there are different seasons for different departments that get hard, hit hard. Parks and Rec and DPW, you know, Parks and Rec's is again, a lot of mowing, a lot of labor in the summer. DPW's a lot of street plowing in the winter.
We do have certain times too, when insurances I do, which I'll often either like the entire amount or half, so those hit us big. They're not, you know, proportioned out each month, but are paid either every six months or once a year, and those costs. Then obviously, put that line item out of whack because the policy's done. But over the course of the year, it all averages out.
That's why I'll look line by line and if you see, you know, a red flag on something, then you can, if you know why it's like it is, it's fine. If not, then you can dig a little deeper.
Stephen Paul?
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. Public Act 152 Health Insurance Premium Opt Out.
Okay, I'm not going to read the entire memo, which I'll probably be happy to hear because a lot of it is similar to what we've had in the past.
Ready to couple of years ago?
Yeah. Just to update it. You have for the last three years, council has been requested by staff and you've incurred to opt out of the PA 152 Health Insurance Premium Options. There are basically two options by the state. One is either the hard cap, which if you do nothing, is what goes into effect. And that's where they set a dollar amount for whether it's a one-person, two-person, or family policy. And they'll say, this is the most that the municipality can pay over the course of a year for that policy. Anything above that will be the responsibility of the employee. The other is 80/20, which says that the municipality can pay no more than 80% of any premium. No matter whether it's a one-person, two-person, or a family. That you must vote on each, or at least, I'm trying to see, is it annually? No, it just requires a vote, a majority vote. There is the third option, at least that municipalities have, and that is that they can opt out. And if they do so, then it basically allows them to do something that's other than those two. And what we've been doing, and we are now in the second year of a four-year phase-in towards the 80/20. So rather than have it hit everybody hard by jumping immediately to 20%, and for some segments of our workforce, it would be a very big hit to do that. Because it's not based on a percentage of wages, it's simply a flat raw number. And so obviously, for those that are at the lower end of that scale, it hits them much harder than it does for others at the upper end. So what we've done is phased it in and we, the unions have agreed to that. And we are actually in the second year of that phase-in. Right now, everybody's paying 15%. Then on July 1st of next year, it will increase to 17.5% and in 2016 to 20%. And that has worked well. It's been agreed by everybody and it has been a big benefit to the employees, especially those on the lower end in terms of softening that impact. What we're doing at this point in time, we are, we are getting ready for negotiations with four of the five unions. Healthcare will be one of those items discussed. We are looking at a new program. And in fact, we had some preliminary meeting, a preliminary meeting between management and Blue Cross to discuss it. And then we met with some of the union heads and they're having, they're having another meeting with Blue Cross. And I will be involved in a very small portion of that beginning, then leaving, so they can discuss freely here again this month to determine whether we want to go in that direction. It's basically a private exchange run by Blue Cross, which provides quite a few options. If that is not the direction we go, we'll do something very similar to what we are doing now, and that is have perhaps three plans and each employee can pick from one of those three plans. Obviously, costs are going up. Some cases, benefits at least, if they don't change, in some cases they do and they're less, but if they don't, the deductibles and the co-insurance are all going up. And so what's coming out of pocket is not, even though they call it the Affordable Care Act, as I said in here, that, I use that term in the broader sense, perhaps because it's, costs are going up for everybody, which is unfortunate, but it's the way it is between the state changes and the federal. It is hitting the employees very hard. But it's also hitting cities too, because as those costs go up, in this case for the city, their costs go up. And really, the two biggest costs I think we have right now are health insurance and pension. And so trying to balance those and give the employees the best possible, in this case, health insurance while controlling the costs as much as we can and making it quote-unquote "as affordable as possible" for the employee, that's the trick. And that's what we're working on right now and as we begin negotiations, that will be finalized more. But in order for us to do that, but especially to continue that phase-in, you are required to opt out. Because of the change in the law, when they passed PA 252 this year, and basically almost eliminated EVAP, not entirely. Karen still had to do her dashboard and her transparency, but she has turned in. It's due December 1st, but she already has that in. We still have to go through and do, if we're gonna opt out, vote on it, but we do not have to submit that to Treasury. It's basically an internal thing. I guess we do have to submit it to MDOT for, with their rules, which we will do once it's adopted, but assuming it's adopted. That's the request at this point in time, is to have council approve that, opt out again for one more year. That would be for calendar year 2015.
Once we get to the 80/20 in 2016 anyway, are we still gonna have to do this?
I think what you'll have to do, I think, is once we get, we'll have to do it next year again. That will then, in 2015, that will cover 16, but I think in 16, we need to do it one more time, but we won't vote for an opt-out. We'll just vote the 20%.
Walagora?
And that will be the end. That's basically just making the 20% official. Now, I may check with, I'll probably check with Treasury to see if we need to do that or not. If we don't, then once we hit 20, then that will be the end of it and we'll be set. If we do have to make one more vote, then we'll just do it. Depending upon what the rules are, to make sure that we are in compliance.
Because we're opting out. If you don't opt out, then you're just automatically in.
You either go automatically to the hard cap unless you vote, you know, to go 20. And the thing is, if you voted to go 20, which is your option, the unions right now will still be protected at least through their contract, which is four of the five will be through June 30th of next year and one of them until June 30th of 2016. It's the admin employees, they would immediately go to 20 on January 1st. Because it's, that's when everything is effective. So that's why we ask for the opt-out, is to keep the admin, which has a very wide range of salaries within it, for myself, if you look at it, see managers at the top, but then you go down, there's a very great range there of wages. So it does affect those lower ones again, even within admin. So that's why we ask for the opt-out, is to allow admin to basically be paying the same premiums as all the other employees.
I move we opt out of PA 152.
Second.
And just had for fiscal, or for calendar year 2015.
For calendar year 2015.
Second.
Sexton?
Yep.
Walagora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Next up bids for desktop workstations.
On Monday, October 27th, 2014, the city received an open bid for desktop computers for the public safety facility and for city hall. The desktop tower PCs at these locations are four to five years old and our budget for systematic replacement this year. We sent out advertisements to 12 vendors and we received four bids, as follows in the spreadsheet there. And we did have a local bidders percentage that we considered, or it didn't apply to local bidders percentage for Chalton. The other three bidders were from out of town. And CDWG was the low at 644.7. In accordance with some recommendations of the IT coordinator at the county, or the IT director at the county, Eric Vandiver, we asked for two, two different PCs. One was kind of a mid-range and one was an upper end because with IT equipment, you know, prices change so often. We thought maybe if we could get a higher-end PC, we'd try. That's not really cost-effective at this point, so we're gonna stick with the i5s. Right now, we have a few i5s that are running and they run fine for everyone at this point. So we're gonna go with that as a bid price and buy 25 of those if you'd like to. A little bid, as I discussed, was from CDWG. And we've worked with them in the past. We've always been very satisfied with their products and also their support, I can say. In consideration of everything presented, I recommend as IT coordinator at the city, city council will contract the supply of desktop workstations to CDWG in the amount of $16,117.50. We originally budgeted $15,000 for the PCs when they were, when we first considered, they were, we were just looking at public safety PCs. And once we kind of got into the bid process and I talked it over with Eric Vandiver or at the county, he did mention to me that he had heard some concerns over the PCs here at city hall. There's five or six here that are slowing down and they're not, you know, not running up to capacity. And he thought that maybe we could work- that maybe we could work those into the bid, we could try that. And so, we tried, tried to do that, and also, those computers are also running Windows XP, which is no longer supported, which kind of leaves holes and security and things like that, so that was something that he wanted to look at eliminating if we could. So we did go out for bid, and we were over the budgeted amount, but we've got enough money to give the bid line item to, to complete the project. We've got a security camera project originally budgeted for 15,000, and we feel we can, the bid will come in under that amount, we feel we can sacrifice the, the additional 1600, or the additional, 800?
1100.
1100 out of that, to, to complete the whole project, to get all 25 PCs.
Said 15, it was security camera project, I think the project number was 300. I had that written down at 5,000, so they left your 3,800 is, do I have that correct?
Uh, yeah, that sounds about, yeah, we're about, yeah, about 3,800.
Well, 3,800, okay.
That should be able to, to do the project. That was originally set up to do the trailhead, to look at DVR and cameras for the trailhead project.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve.
You know, I just, you guys ought to know what I'm going to say, right? You know, percentage-wise, and Steve mentioned, at 7%, past the local bidders preference, raw numbers, it's 1100 dollars. And so, we can spend 17,290 in Alpena, or we can save 1100 and spend 16,117 in Illinois. So I, again, I've said it before, but I'd always rather spend a little extra and keep the money here.
I guess one thing I would want to make council aware of, is that our policy is 5%. If you waive that when it's 7%, that other company, and Bill, I'll let you chime in, but I think we would be at risk of them going after us and saying we're not abiding by our own policy, and could take us to litigate on that, for that very reason. We have a written policy saying what it is. Now, yes, council can also modify that policy, but then what happens the next time when, if we increase it to 7% range, and the next one is seven and a half, and we keep bumping it up, it's endless, and I think eventually you're going to get where out-of-town bidders will simply say, there's no reason to bid, because they're always going to make adjustment to give it to the, the local, and then you're going to see, I believe, prices go up, because the local will see there's no competition from outside the community, that it is, that it is strictly local, and, and that's, at least from our perspective. We're, we're charged with spending wisely our taxpayer dollars, and if they had been within the 5%, there would have been no question, they would have been given the opportunity to agree to that lower price, and if they did, it would be awarded to them. But they are over, and they all, I don't know, I mean, if we violate that, does that put us at any risk?
Yeah, you'd have to vote to set aside the policy, and the general rule is, once you make one exception, how do you make it the next time? Next person comes in and says, well, I was only 7.72%, that was only a little bit more than the 7.27%, so, once you, once you accept one, it's pretty hard to not keep doing that in the future. And I think, I think Greg's right in the sense that if you, if we always make the exception for the local bidder, I mean, it makes sense to try to spend the money locally, we know that. But if you make that exception, then eventually, the out-of-town, out-of-state bidders won't bid anymore, and then you'll be left with only local bidders, and it will drive the price up.
Just a quick, it almost sounds like we'd be better off if there wasn't a policy.
All right.
Because then we could just say Chauvin and not really say why, if there wasn't a specific local bidders preference, it wouldn't tie us into that then, right?
Well, you know, there's, there's reasons to, to have instituted the local bidder preference, and, and the preference doesn't mean they get the bid, the preference just means if they're close enough, they get to match the bid. So they still got to bring their bid down to, it's not that we're giving it to them because they're within 5% of the low bid, it's just that we're given the option to come down to the low bid. So, there was a lot of discussion when that was first put in, and the thought was to let the local folks have an opportunity to match our out-of-town bid. But it's true, if we didn't have the preference, then, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't deal with that. Our, our standard bid specs say we can reject any all bids that the city doesn't feel are in its best interest. But, once again, once you start doing that, it's, you're going to turn off other bidders. I mean, if, if Alpena comes, has the reputation that it doesn't matter what you bid, because they're going to pick whoever they want, no matter if you're low or not, it's not a good reputation to have, because it turns bidders off bidding on your projects.
You know, and, and I, I'm just, I'm just going to interrupt just real quick, because I appreciate everything you, your response to the comment, but if we want to have a discussion about local bidder preference, and whether we want to change the policy or not, let's put that on the agenda and discuss it separately. I just want to get back to, just, it was a great response, and, and I agree with where we are right now, because we can't even vote to change the policy, it still won't affect this, and it's not on the agenda, so I'll have that. If somebody does want to put that on the agenda for a future meeting, let's discuss that then, and go back to the, to the desktop workstations. I agree with where we are right now, they don't, they don't, they're above the 5%, so I, me personally, I'm fine with that, so. If there's any other, anything other discussion, other than the, than the bidder preference or the size of the bid, I know that Greg and I discussed this morning how we, we're kind of tied by the software companies that say we're not going to, that Windows XP isn't going to be supported anymore, so you're kind of stuck whether the computer works or not, you're almost kind of stuck to if you want upgrades and things, so it's unfortunate sometimes that we do have to spend considerable money for something that still does work, even though there are several that aren't really up to speed for what they need to be used for, so it's an odd balance. But that's pretty much the only comment I have, otherwise it was budgeted for, so. If anybody has anything else.
Steve, what do you do with the old ones? You probably can't recirculate those anyhow, right?
Well, you know, there's sometimes we'll, we'll, I guess Property is one of the companies that, that'll take them. We typically don't get any money for them, we'll keep some around to swap in and out if somebody has a PC that, that, you know, freezes one day, you need to get them something that's running, we'll have one off to the side, we'll put in front of them for a while, and we'll fix the other one. But, you know, at this point, there's really not much value to them, because they're, they're running pretty slow. We've gotten a few calls as of late, once everybody knew this was in the bid process, I've received more calls on when, when, when this happened, because we're getting tired of restarting our machine four times a day. So it's, yeah, just about to the end of their useful life, really, so.
I move we award the contract with supply of desktop workstations to CDWG in the amount of 16,117 dollars and 50 cents.
Second.
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
No.
Thank you, Steve. Communications and petitions, no unfinished business, we have new business, resolution number 14, 2014-13A, a revised resolution to allow construction prior to NIZ approval. What did you do?
A lot of lines.
Just more red.
A little bit more red, Paul, yeah. After receiving the resolution passed in October 20, 2014, state of Michigan staff members at the Treasury Department noted that the wording was incorrect, and apologized for any misunderstanding. Staff have, have made the requested changes to those, have made the requested changes, and had, and also had reviewed by the state of Michigan staff to verify that it is, it can be the appropriate wording. Changes are marked in the attached resolution, and I have verified, again, on my press, that this is going to be good enough for them this time, and so much so that they've already put it on the agenda, assuming that it passes tonight, so, yeah, so.
Whoops. So basically, anybody that can't see it, they've changed receiving approval from the state of Michigan to submitting an application to the city of Alpena, just about everywhere on the resolution.
Yeah, instead of approval from the state, it is before filing the application to the city of Alpena.
And, Bill, all we have to do is just make it 2014-13A as, or how do you want this motion to go?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay. I move we, we approve resolution 2014-13A.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Spraying contract renewal.
Basically, what this is, is we utilize the firm of Phillips Expert Tree Service, they'll do weed control and help out parking lots, the typical scrambling around up, et cetera, around the trees. We'll use it around the Van Shulburn to try to control weeds there, and the front yard in City Hall, when Greg doesn't like it, looking yellow with all the dandelions, so.
Says the guy whose daughter got married now.
But basically, what we do is we sign, we bid this out, and 2012 had a multi-year contract, and it does have a one-year renewal option. The owner of the company agreed to extend those same unit prices out for the last, this one-year extension, so it's my recommendation, city engineer, the city council, when you're the weed spraying contract with Phillips Expert Tree and Landscaping Services, the pricing remain the same as the 2014 pricing.
Can't beat the same price a year later. It hasn't come up much. I move we approve the contract extension for the weed spraying renewal with Phillips Expert Tree and Landscaping.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, Rick.
I move we adjourn.